Twenty twenty, I'd like to call the Columbus City Council meeting to order at seven one. Everyone, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applying on the United States of America in the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on our agenda tonight is a motion to approve the consent agenda, numbers three and five.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to have an update for the 2020 ambulance service. Fire Chief Al Newman is here. What did you find out, Al?
Okay, we sat down, myself, Greg Weiss, who's captain for Forest Lake PD, Rick Peterson, who is Forest Lake Police Chief, Brian First with commander with Anoka County, and then three personnel from M Health, Tom Edmondson, who is the chief EMS provider, Tom Dunn, who is the deputy chief, and Kevin Kane, who's the ambulance operations supervisor. He'll actually be the person that's assigned to this area when that conversion happens. Pretty long conversation, about an hour and a half. We covered everything from operations to staffing to transports, where they're going to house ambulances, what their staffing levels are going to be, training, what kind of services they provide to the community, both fire department, the community or the municipalities itself, and then the sheriff's department. They're actually going to have the same operational model that North Ambulance currently has, which will put one ALS rig out of Lino Lakes, two ALS rigs out of Forest Lake, a power rig that sometimes will be scheduled in Forest Lake or Wyoming, and that's basically an off-hour rig for when they get busy in certain areas. They'll have one BLS ambulance, which will be new to the area, that will take some of the lower-level calls to hopefully free up the ALS ambulance during that peak times. They work their staffing in 12-hour shifts. One of the things that they said that they would provide to communities is that they would staff community events at no charge. North Ambulance does for some events, but some other events, they charge for. They'll also support fire training, so when we do live burns in the community, they'll actually have a dedicated resource for that training. In the past, we've had to pay for that. A big change for us is that they'll provide the EMR refresher training at no charge. That currently costs about $1,800 a year for Forest Lake Fire. And then, one of the things that we talked, since M Health is a partner with the University of Minnesota in Fairview, is are they going to steer their patients to their hospitals? And they said absolutely not. It will be basically a destination will be left up to the person that they're trading, and they'll be able to go to any hospital of their choice. So that was good to hear. One of the questions we asked them was, what happens if Lino or if Hugo decides to go with White Bear Fire or Alina? And the answer that they gave us is, we've talked about it, we don't have a plan quite yet, but if that does occur, you know, we'll have to adjust staffing, having to adjust our operational model. I felt good about that answer because they didn't try to give us something that they were unsure of. It seemed like a pretty honest answer. So overall, the meeting went well. I'm pretty confident with the service that it's going to be the same or better moving forward. And after the meeting, we kind of sat down and talked about it with Anoka County and Forest Lake PD, and we all came to the same consensus that this will probably, once that date comes, we'll see little or no impact. The, we're probably going to see the impact as in the near future, up to that date where the transition happens. As North staff then takes other jobs and their staffing levels start to get thin, we'll probably see slower responses and more mutual aid from our neighbors. But M Health did say if that, if it becomes a point where it's a staffing concern, they'll come in early if they need to.
And when is this date for the?
Six one is the changeover date.
Has anyone got any questions? So, but you think, from what they said, it will be as efficient or maybe better?
Yes. You know, it's just one of them things until you experience it. There's some uncertainty there, but they're well-versed and didn't really stumble on any of the answers, and I felt confident that they would follow through with what they're saying.
Good much right.
You know, the good thing is, I mean, having a partnership with the University of Minnesota and Fairview, they've got money to back this. And one of the other things that I forgot to mention in this is at the time of our meeting on Thursday, January 23rd, they had already staffed almost 50% of those positions, well ahead of where they thought they'd be at this time.
So they do not take over though until June 1st unless?
Yes, unless.
See a problem coming with North?
Yep, and I mean, North would have to voluntarily have an agreement with them to give up that service earlier than that proposed date.
So North has one ambulance now in the area?
No, they're still fully staffed, or their run, their operational model is the same as it has been. But I'm sure that some of their employees have taken other positions, just knowing that this is going to be done on six one. And so, you know, as a result, we've seen a little bit slower response, and we've seen more mutual aid calls with neighboring ambulance services than we've seen in the past. And I'm sure that that is just a direct result of M Health transition.
M Health must be hiring some of their guys?
At the time that we had this meeting, they were interviewing three of their personnel. And they were, one of the things that's going to help and is always difficult, M Health is a union shop, North Ambulance isn't. And so, they actually were able to get a memorandum of understanding with the union contract through M Health to get a lateral transfer of seniority into M Health. And that's probably going to help pick up some of the previous employees. Instead of starting, you know, 15-year employee starting at the bottom of, you know, a union shop is pretty tough. But if they're going to be able to get a lateral transfer of that seniority, I would expect that some people will transfer them to M Health.
Anything else, anyone? Thank you all. Drive safely so we don't need the ambulance before June 6th. Now we're down to number seven, Planning Commission report.
So, the Planning Commission and the City Council had a joint meeting on February 5th, and the meeting consisted of continued discussion on land use and zoning. Everybody was in attendance except for Councilmember Mr. Peterson. The goal of this meeting was to define definitions based on discussion for what we, for discussion for what we felt each of the following categories should consist of. So we were working on definitions for retail, professional office, services off-site, restaurant, hotel slash motel, and e-commerce. So e-commerce would be like bear homes. And so, we think we hashed that out pretty good, and they're all listed in the packet, I think. Then we moved on to zoning boundaries and districts. And the group consensus was the map that we were given was good in that we would kind of consider moving forward with that. And then next, we worked on zoning with, when we moved to zoning, it prompted further discussion on what each proposed district should be. We were able to get through four of the eight proposed districts, with the remaining four to be discussed at future meetings. The following that which we did get through was Community Commercial District, which is C1, and that's red on the map. High Density Residential Mixed Use, MU1 on the map, and that's dark yellow. Medium Density Residential Mixed Use, MU2, yellow on the map. And General Commercial District 2, C2. We discussed and formed the draft definitions that will be adjusted in the draft ordinance. If that's correct, because I was trying to read the notes a little bit, okay. Extensive discussion then took place on the specifics of what should be in each district, which we're still working on. Staff and planning and City Council will continue to work as a team on the remaining four districts. That's really kind of what we went over. Any questions?
Yeah, our next meeting is going to be a workshop, correct?
It is a workshop, and it will start at 6:00, and it will be a joint meeting.
And that meeting is on the?
It's on the 19th. Yes, the 19th.
The 19th, okay. And then, you guys had mentioned something about another workshop on the 26th. Is that a City Council, or are you requesting a joint meeting on that as well?
It's a joint meeting, and that is the regularly-scheduled council workshop. So it's from 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay, and so Planning Commission as well, okay. Joint meeting, 4:00 to 6:00. Okay, and then, we'd like to give a big shout-out to the staff and all their hard work and their attention to detail on the packets. They made the process clear, and we felt moving forward was much easier. So we greatly appreciate the hard work you guys did. Pass that along to Mr. Ben too, please.
Ben did a great job.
He did, it was excellent. Those maps, the way he had everything defined, the goals for the night set out were very, very productive, I thought.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we were all there. So there. So, we'll see you in a week.
Yeah.
Get ready to do some work.
Anything else?
Anybody?
19th was a 6:00.
What time is it, 19th?
Oh, the 19th, at 6:00.
6:00.
They moved up one hour.
Yeah, so the 19th, we're going to do a 6:00 o'clock joint. And then the 26th is an extra meeting workshop for the Planning Commission.
Correct, starting at 4:00.
Starting at 4:00, okay. Thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you, Pam. All right. We're down to number eight. Anyone from the public like to speak, public open forum? Number nine. Elizabeth and staff would like direction on the Coon Creek Watershed appointment. And that's letter A1-3.
Elizabeth.
In your additions, there is a letter, and it's just a letter from Anoka County indicating that they have two appointments up this year for the Coon Creek Watershed District. And as in the past, when they've notified us of a vacancy, they've given us public notice and also the opportunity to submit names for those appointments. In the past, we've posted it on the website, there hasn't been a lot of interest. But certainly, we can continue to post, but at this point, unless someone on the council has a name to submit, staff does not have a name to submit for either one of these appointments for Coon Creek.
How long do you leave it on the board for? Month, couple weeks? It has been, yeah. Does anyone have anyone you'd like to recommend? Or would you like to do it yourselves? If not, leave it up on the board. Oh, letter D, staff and consultant reports. Engineers, actually, thank you, we have two engineers. Dennis, come on up. So many things are happening, we have two engineers in Columbus.
Oh, smokes. Could use that a year ago.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you should have in front of you in your packets is some information I provided on the Southwest Area Project, and wish I had more positive information to present. But I provided a very brief summary memo of the project. Last fall, you approved a change order, and I said there'd be another one coming. That's what the biggest packet is. There's 10 different items at a total of $72,000, $72,080. That is wrapped into the other item, which is pay request number three. So that number is in that $100,000 number. I can go through these one by one, or if you have questions on any of them. A lot of them pertain to site conditions that, you know, were discovered during construction or bad soils that resulted in us raising some structures. There was one, which is part of 3.1, where we TKDA had a discrepancy in our electrical voltage in our specifications between the pumps and the panel, so we're going to take responsibility for that. That's my item number three on the recommendations. About two-thirds of that first 3.1 change order number was due to that. And then any, some engineering time that we spent on that, we'll also credit back to the project. So again, I don't know if you had any questions or you wanted me to go through in more detail. 10 different items.
Would you repeat, please, Dennis? So the second motion in green, $100,078.20, of which the 72 above it is included?
Correct.
Correct.
So, the way I have it laid out in order would be to, if you agree to approve the change order for $72,080.28, and then approve the pay request for $100,078.20, which includes that change order. And then the last item is a, I don't know if it's not a motion or a acceptance. And then all that remains on the project, sorry, is in the spring, is to pave the access road in a turf restoration. I know Jim has been working with the contractor and the subcontractor and TKDA folks that the lift station and water is functioning.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just as, by way of reminder, it's the city's intent or the staff's intent to bring forward special assessments in the early fall and to conduct those hearings and assess the majority of the project, if not all the project. Is that correct?
I'd like to do it in summer.
Oh, summer.
Fall is such a busy time.
Should be able to do it in the summer.
Whenever the project closes out, right?
Yeah.
And all of these, plus the rest of it, is all assessed and divided between the property owners down in the triangle, correct? So?
That's correct. The benefited parties are two property owners on either side of that improvement.
So, all we need are motions. Who wants to start? It's basically a pass-through.
That's correct.
So I'll do the first one. So I move to approve the change order number three to Vit, is it Vit? Vit and Company in the amount of $72,080.28.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll move to approve pay request number three to Vit and Company in the amount of $100,078.20.
Second?
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And number three?
And I move to accept construction and engineering fees credit from TKDA in the amount of $17,467.40.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all I had, thank you.
That's it?
Look like you've had some sun.
Hard not to.
I know. Rub it in.
All right, the next thing on page 23, Hornsby, South Hornsby Street Survey.
Yeah, this relates to a project that's been discussed before I came on board here. South Hornsby Street, south of Highway 97. That improvement is about a mile long. TKDA did a feasibility report about a year ago on that project, laid out about three options for that project. The window for completing that improvement this year is closing. It's doable, but we'd have to accelerate that design considerably. At the same time, if we don't do it this year, we still have a number of steps that would need to be taken. So, right now, we're just coming to you with requesting authorization to perform the survey on the road so that those next steps could be taken. There's a number of decisions that would have to be made on whether the project would be assessed or actually the final design of the work as well. So, this is just step one.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
So I move to approve the topographic design survey for a not-to-exceed amount of $9,000.
And a second?
Second.
Now, some more discussion. So I have a question. So, this starts, when do you start? Start on this, right away, or?
Yeah, well, we'll probably have a crew out here next week, so.
And when, how long does it take to?
It's probably a little over a week, week's worth of work, so.
So, by the 1st of March?
Yes.
For sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? And, I have another question. So whether we decide to do this this year, or we decide to wait until next year, all the data that you're going to pick up?
It's still good, yeah. It can be utilized. You know, if we try to bid it this year, you always run the danger of compressing the available schedule for a contractor to work, and that may affect his bids. It might be more favorable to do all those design steps this year and let a bid either late this year or early next year, as far as achieving more favorable bids. But I know there's a lot of maintenance that has to be done to keep the road going, and Jim's get pretty good at that, so.
All right.
So did we share with Kevin what we talked about the other day?
We, I figured we would do it at the workshop.
Okay.
Before the next council meeting.
Okay, so we'll have more discussion on this on the 26th?
For about 20, 25 minutes or so, yes.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second, or do we have a second?
Yeah.
So let's vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fair that. Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, just a quick report on the Arntz matter. Just by way of reminder, that was litigation that was filed in the Minnesota Court of Appeals. It was filed in the wrong court, so it was dismissed. It's now been refiled by Arntz's attorneys in District Court. And the, John Baker, who's Leake assigned counsel, his office accepted service. And based upon that service date, the answer from the city is due on March 31. I would expect at some point between now and then, Mr. Baker would come out and close session to talk about strategy and get your input. So, that's something that's regularly done, but we would schedule that well in advance of that date.
Anything else?
Not until the Zurich Street matter.
Got it. Number 12, Mayor and City Council members report. Any?
Nothing to report.
I have a couple of things. One is that Mayor Priner, myself, and Elizabeth met with the seniors on the 5th to sort of close up the loose ends related to transitioning the expenses for the senior center to the city and basically how we would be operating with the senior group going forward. And that was a really positive meeting. Everybody walked away very happy. Their board voted to donate the tables and chairs, and I think some of the equipment in the kitchen to the city. The mixer, they're going to donate to the Lions. And so, I understand that Counselor has been asked to do a donation agreement? Yep, okay, so.
And we will do that under the retainer, so there won't be an additional charge.
Great, so I think.
We'll make them happier yet.
Yep. It all turned out very well. I think everybody walked away really happy. I'm happy.
Yeah.
They're happy. And I think there'll be follow-up meetings with the Lions related to their use of the facility for their breakfast. So, I know you're in the process of getting that set up.
Yes.
Okay. Second thing is, we had a Sunrise Water Management Organization meeting on the 6th. Shelley and I both attended that. There are a couple of things that I just want to call your attention to. Probably about six months ago, there was a memo from Rice Creek Watershed about a boundary realignment that they had recognized due to a LiDAR survey that they had performed and noticed, I think, some discrepancies in the hydrologic boundary between the two watersheds. And so, they are going to be moving forward with the process with the state to realign that boundary. I think it affects maybe two parcels of land. You have the memo and the map of it. So, it's a pretty small area, but that area that was once under Sunrise will now be under Rice Creek. It will make a difference in terms of Anoka County and taxes, where, you know, the line that talks about the assessment from the watershed districts, they will see that now. Those properties will see it from Rice Creek rather than, I think, whatever the city had assessed under Sunrise. So, and I don't know if that affects you guys. I mean, you'll, you probably need to know that if there's ever any development or anything up there, but ideally, it'll get resolved and the maps will be adjusted. And so, we knew that, we knew that it, you know, that it was happening. We didn't know when it was going to start, and Rice Creek had sent a memo saying they were going to start the process. And everybody at Sunrise is in favor of it and agrees to it, so it's, it's all good. The second thing is that we reviewed the budget for 2021. Good news is that we were able to shave about 11% off the budget due to some underspending from the past year, projects that they had budgeted for but didn't happen. And despite what you hear about government, we decided not to spend the money on other projects and actually take it off of the 2021 budget. So you will be seeing that budget coming forward for each of the cities in the joint powers agreement to approve. And so, I think sometime in the next week or so, if you haven't already received it, Elizabeth, you'll see that.
Okay, I haven't received it yet.
And then you can pass it around. Let's see, was there anything else there that was important? I think the only other thing is that there still is that process with the one watershed, one plan. Meetings that are going on, this is the thing that's been enacted by the state to try to shift the funding that comes from the state for different projects, from a competitive grant process to allocating on a watershed basis. And I am a representative on the policy committee for that process for the Lower St. Croix. So we've been meeting for more than a year now. And there is going to be a vote on the plan in the next couple of weeks to send it out to the different cities for their review and comment. One of the concerns that we've talked about here in the past has been the concern of the type of organization that gets formed to govern this new watershed, I guess, district or whatever they, whatever they're going to call it. There are two possibilities. It could be a joint powers entity or a joint powers collaborative. The collaborative is a sort of a more loosely-formed organization. And with the collaborative, the liability of the decisions that are made by that organization flow down to the respective parties that are members of that collaborative. And right now, there are 19 of them, Sunrise being one of them. The other is an entity, which is actually forming a governing board that would accept liability on behalf of that organization. Initially, there was more support for the idea of an entity. More recently, it seems that people want to start off with a collaborative, so I think that decision will be made at the next meeting. I think the question that we had, as we discussed this in the past, was what that meant for liability to the members of the joint powers agreement under Sunrise. And so, in discussing this with. And so, in discussing this with Elizabeth, I'm gonna draft a memo to the League of Minnesota Cities and ask for their recommendation on that. And, because it's bigger than us, I mean, it's the entire state, so I'm thinking they may have actually even looked into this already. And if not, I think it'd be a good thing for them to look into. So, I'll try to get that out in the next week or so. Even if, even if they don't respond or I don't get it out by the time they send this out for comment, we'll have 60 days to respond. So we'll, we should be able to understand better what our, what our legal liabilities are regardless of the, of the, if there are any, regardless of, of the type of organization they, they vote to enact, so. That's it.
Nothing to report. Go ahead.
You didn't mention the argument that we have with the district or the watershed district about 25% of operating cost, or non-operating cost, and our portion. There has been a argument that we should not pay the apportioned amount because we don't get the services from the watershed district. And right now, it's still in, in flux as far as whether we're gonna be able to change that or not. The only thing that upset me in this last meeting was that our, our percentage has gone up two percentage points, and that's because we are taxed higher than some of the other townships or cities or whatever. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're fighting, even though the dollar amounts are not that much, the percentages keep going up, and I don't see that that's gonna change in the near future. I think that Columbus is gonna continue to be taxed at a higher rate than possibly Linwood or some of the other entities, so. The other thing is, is that we did have a meeting at the track for Columbus through the Branding Committee a few weeks ago, and it went very well. We were expected to only get 10% of our businesses to come, which would have been six businesses, and we actually got 13 to come. And we had a, a nice time talking with people. We had the, Mindoc came and kind of explained the bridge situation, which is kind of in flux right now. And, and then we had a table there set up, and Jessica did a wonderful job of kind of presenting what we'd like to do with branding and the, and our questionnaire that went out and that sort of thing. So, it, it went really well. And I guess, you know, from the people that know that set these things up, the marketing people that we know from, the track that were kind of giving us ideas about how this should work, they thought that, you know, the turnout was great, and they said that for a first time, it was really, really successful, so. We were pleased with that.
That's it.
I have two items. One is that yesterday, we had a special election in Anoka County. Jeff Reinhardt is our new Anoka County Board Member representing our area, us and Lino and Linwood and Centennial?
Parts of Blaine.
And parts of Blaine. So congratulations to him. And yesterday morning, the day of the election, we had at least six squad cars and dogs here, and another half a dozen up at the on-ramps of the freeway. But they caught the, I believe it was a home burglary, and they caught them before they got on the freeway. So, we had a lot of excitement, but nobody got hurt, and we all lived to talk about it. So, next thing we'll move on to are the, is the Public Works Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I have a couple of outstanding items that we need to get through tonight. The first one will be the ordinance for the seasonal weight restrictions. Everything looks good. I made one change to the seasonal load limit because basically what we've done in the past is all of our roads have been posted at five tons per axle, and that is not the case moving forward. So, basically, we just added in otherwise, as posted otherwise. So, we will have a couple of roads in town that will be posted at more than five tons per axle, so we thought we better do that because that's the, that's the direction that we're moving towards. So, with that, I assume we have to approve that then?
Yes, and the other changes are shown on, under commercial. Those are additions?
The, the, under, see, the, the weight restriction was because we wanted a clarification in what the definition was for the no-hall route. And two meetings ago, we, we decided that the 26,000 pounds was going to be the criteria. And the other was just a clarification. The previous amendment did not include the direct route to, from 181st to Kettle River.
Right.
So that was just a correction.
So if you're ready, the ordinance number is?
It's 2001.
2001, first one of the year.
We've gotten resolutions already, so that's what the, yeah, this is the first ordinance.
So who would like to make it?
Move to adopt ordinance 2001 and ordinance amendment in Chapter 6 of the Columbus Code as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Congratulations, this has been a long time coming.
Finally.
Yes.
If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I will order more signs next week.
Yay.
Okay, now.
Now for the fun stuff.
The long-awaited Pine Street talk again. This one is actually longer than Hornsby Street. I wrote up a little overview today, and Elizabeth made it look pretty. But in your additions, I believe it is, right?
It is in the additions, yes, in the last two pages of the additions.
Okay, so the last two pages of the additions is just a, it's a project overview of what we are looking to do on Pine Street. I'll give you just a little bit of history while you're looking that over. I started here in 2006. In some time shortly after that, and I'm saying 10 to 12 years, but I'm thinking that is potentially longer than that, we have been getting complaints from residents about flooding down there. We've had, you know, I've had numerous complaints, but there's a, there's a couple in particular that you hear from quite often. We've gotten petitions from other residents asking, what can we do with the water problem? And the, the main problem is, is the ditch doesn't flow, so the water moves from the north to the south, and it hits our Pine Street ditch, and it just sits there, which ultimately ended up backing up into residents' properties and then they're having issues as well. We've spent many, many years and many, many hours talking about this, and, you know, TKDA has done elevation surveys of the ditch line and culverts, and, and I've had many conversations with Rice Creek Watershed and what we can do. And, and in this little sheet here, we kind of laid out the steps, the problems and the actions that we've taken to get where we are today, and then, you know, the fixes. And then ultimately, you know, if we're able to do this fix, we're gonna clean the ditch, replace some culverts, lower a couple culverts, or lower a culvert, and then the water should move from the north to the south, hit our ditch, and drain properly, as potentially it did years ago. What I'm looking for tonight is a motion to approve this plan.
So when you say years ago, you're talking about that 1900 date you had?
So in 1900-something, that road was put in and the water drained.
Okay.
And, you know, over the years, and, and you know, you run into this problem everywhere because vacant land, the water comes and goes as nature intended, and then somebody comes and plunks a house in there with the driveway, and now there's less land for that water to move where it did, where it ran freely. And then another guy comes in and puts in a house, and they both cut their grass because they want really nice grass, and they put in a pole barn, and they don't want to, you know, they bag all their grass, so then they go dump it into the lower area in the back, and we just keep filling and changing the hydrology of the land. And inevitably, what you do on your land, you think it's no big deal, but it ultimately affects your neighbor's land that's upstream from you. And the, and the, it just keeps going and going and going. And I, I don't know exactly what map she's put in, but if you look at that map, which was, that's a relatively recent map versus the map from, you know, the 60s, it doesn't look anything like that. You know, there aren't all the ponds up to the top that somebody dug, there aren't all the roads and the driveways and the pole barns and the extra parking areas, and all of that stops the water from moving the way that it used to. And inevitably, you end up with a problem. And, you know, you add driveway culverts that, you know, over the years, they start to fail, and, you know, the road was gravel until 2010, so, you know, we plow that road and all, everything moves from a sloped road right to the ditch, and it just starts to fill up over time, and then pretty soon, the water just doesn't drain anymore. So, you know, you just, you have, it's our responsibility to do the maintenance in the road ditches to make the water flow, so.
I, I guess the thing is, is that now we're doing all these extensive tests on, like, Thunbeck goes in and that sort of thing, so that things like that don't happen, right? And we worry about, you know, people, somebody came with one pole barn and one quarter, or one little corner was, you know, in wetland, you know, and we hope that that isn't gonna impact. My question is, I, I understand this has been an outstanding problem for a long time, you know? Is this going to set a precedent for other neighborhoods to ask for help in that area? Is the only thing I have. And I, the reason I say this is because on our road, they decided to put through gas lines. We chose not to at first, to hook up to it. So it wasn't, you know, what I did with my land, it was that somebody came in. And when they covered up the area that they had dug up, they ruined the drainage completely. And it, you know, and, and I don't expect the city to come and fix that. So, I'm just saying, if you're making this case for this to be done, right, do we have other neighborhoods that are going to potentially say, you've set precedent, and now we have to fix all these ditches?
To answer part of your question, we're, we're working through, we, we have people petition to do work in the road right-of-way all the time. And in the past, you know, they petition the city, that, that information goes to the engineer, the engineer reviews it, and then it goes back and they do the project. And Public Works never has, in, in many years, has not ever been involved in that process. And over the last couple of years, you know, I started getting copied on it, and now we do site inspections to make sure that it was put back the way that it was existing, you know what I mean? So, you know, somebody puts in a gas line, and they, and there's a two-foot higher hump in the ditch that wasn't there before, you know, we make them remove that. We make them restore the grasslands or the, or the, you know, gravel or asphalt or whatever they might do. I mean, we're going out to inspect all of that now. So, to answer that portion of the question, in years past, yeah, I'm sure some of that's been that way. From two years forward, we've been making big gains then trying to catch a lot of that stuff, so. I, I think, I think as a resident, everybody's gonna try to make a fight, and it's up to us to justify if that fight is worth trying to, trying to help them out or not, you know what I mean? Nobody, nobody, no residents want to pay for anything. They always want the big city to pay, right? Because we have all the money, and it's always our problem. You know, it's my problem that your basement's flooding, right? But, I mean, it's a, we have record-high water. We started out last fall with record-high water. What do you think spring's gonna be? I mean, I'm getting calls in January saying that, you know, their land is flooding right now, and I mean, it's, it's winter. What, you know, two months, what's it gonna look like? So, I, I mean, we, this has been a problem. It is, the water runs to our road ditch from our road, and just by nature, it runs that way. It's our road ultimately that's impeding it to run the way that it did naturally 100 years ago. So, I mean, and it's our right-of-way. So ultimately, we're responsible to maintain our right-aways, and this is part of it. And, you know, we should be way more proactive at things like this than we are, but we don't have the manpower, the staff to, to cover that, which I'm just setting that seed now because later this year, I'm gonna come and ask for that. But I, I think, I think no matter what, somebody's always gonna come and ask the city to try to help, for help or pay, and it's up to us to decide, is it, is it worthy, is it a worthy cause or not? I don't know how to answer that question any better than that.
And in this case, it is truly right-of-way. This, this is, this is Pine Street right-of-way.
Right.
We've identified a problem, you know, between driveway culverts, the, the ditch, the level of the ditch and the flow of water. And so this truly is a road, a road problem. While we had petitions from others on, on properties, we're having water problems, whether it was the road ditch that wasn't flowing fast enough for the water, or whether it was truly a private problem with drainage, we, we can't identify that because we don't know whose water is who. But at the end of the day, when Jim looked at it, we have a problem on Pine Street. So I think the defining factor when someone comes to us is whether or not it's our road ditch and whether it's draining water from our road, and whether driveway culverts are impeding the flow. And if it is, that's always our problem, because we're in charge of the roads. So in this particular case, because Jim and I talked about this, and I said, you know, in this particular case, I think this is a maintenance issue. If someone comes later and says, I still have water, then really it becomes a private issue, and they should figure out how to take care of the water, either on their property or getting off their property. Today, that's why we have Rice Creek and Coon Creek, because they make sure when development comes in, that water doesn't leave their property any faster or any more volume than it did before they built. Unfortunately, we had quite a number of years in there where those reviews didn't take place.
Okay.
So who would like to make the motion?
I will. I'll be my guest.
Motion to approve the work plan, fixed problems 1 through 5 for Pine Street ditch maintenance project, and to award a contract to Dunaway Construction the amount of $14,548 based on a project overview and as presented and identified actions taken by the Public Works Superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? I have one point of discussion. When will you start? Can this be done before summer, or do you have to wait till frost?
I ultimately am gonna work with Dunaways, because I want to try to get it done as soon as possible. It, I mean, it would be nice to go out there and do it right now. I don't know that it's possible to do it right now, but we've had, we just had a discussion not that long ago, and he knows that it's my intent to move as soon as possible, because if I can alleviate any more water from building up in the ditch and backing up, I'll, I'll be a hero.
All right.
I have one other comment. I'd just like to request that we notify the residents that signed the petition, what our plans are, because I think they'll be really happy, really, really happy to hear that this action's gonna be taken, so.
It will be my intent to potentially send out, I mean, potentially this overview of what it is, and then just some other little, some more header to it with some contact information as to what we're doing and, and what our intent is, but.
Right.
Yeah, that was the plan.
Yeah, because I think the last conversation we had was leaning more in the direction of them needing to be assessed to do it, and so this will be really good news for them.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Public Information Coordinator Report.
Um, no report, but I agree the event at Runyon Aces went really well. I thought it was a great turnout. Thanks for everybody that came.
Thanks for all the hard work you did.
Yep. City Administrator.
I just want to have one item on behalf of Lori Recycling Coordinator. In each of your spots, you was the 2020 Columbus Recycling Event. She wanted to, to review the brochure, and then if you do have any comments, you can either let me know or talk to Lori, and she said then she would then send it out to the residents so that they can post it on their refrigerator and, and log dates and do all sorts of things for the drop-off recycling days and the curb-side event.
So if you come to recycling, you had a, say, an old stove or something, you needed coupon? You need, well, you actually need a coupon, or is that just there for?
The, the coupon is for one free item.
If you don't have the coupon, you couldn't drop off an item?
For free. You have to pay.
Save the coupon.
So if you had 10 items, you, you know, and you brought the coupon, you'd only pay, you'd paid for nine to get one free? But if you don't have the coupon, you'll have to pay for all nine.
Go talk to your neighbor. For an extra coupon.
I don't have anything, I just wonder if you need a coupon, because you never needed it before.
Well, this looks good to me, so. Unless anybody sees anything, or, or if we see something, stop in and talk to her. We don't have to look at it completely tonight. So now we're going to have a closed-meeting discussion of North Zurich Street land acquisition.
Mr. Mayor, if you would make the public announcements before folks leave, then we won't have to reopen the meeting.
What do I announce?
The items under E.
Under E, oh, before everybody leaves, under letter E. Under E, oh, before everybody leaves, under letter E. City Council Workshop, February 26, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Planning Commission Meeting, February 19th at 6:00 p.m. The calendar's the meetings on the back of our paperwork. So now.
And one other item.
And one other item.
We are not gonna discuss the Southeast Quad tonight.
And we will not be discussing the Southeast Quad. So now I close this meeting?
Yes, with, with this announcement. The announcement that's in the agenda, if you just read that.